Good evening, welcome to the Town of Cicero Planning Board Meeting. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Zach, would you lead us along, please?
Sure.
Pledge of Allegiance, we're in the Hall of United States of America. Thank you, everybody, for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is the approval of the December 4th minutes. Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
Mr. Abbey?
Yes.
Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Bloss?
Yes.
And I vote yes, minutes have been approved. We'll now open the meeting to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the board on any act of application, you may do so now. Given nobody's approach, we'll close the public input and move on to the first agenda item. This is for Party Rental Express property at 9006 Bruton Road.
Good evening, Tim Coier, I am Zian Romans.
Evening.
So we were last here, if you recall, back in roughly May of this year. We have been waiting specifically on the architectural renderings that I passed out for the new building facade that they're going to propose out there. We did get a letter of comments from Mark that we addressed, went down through there back in May again, that we changed and revised the map. The one, I will say, the one outstanding item that we haven't addressed is specifically the lot line adjustment and/or combining the parcels into one. Just waiting, wanted to make sure, A, the town, you guys were all on board with what the changes were. And so if you look at it here, this is an existing tax parcel here, tax parcel line. So you have one tax parcel up here on the north and one tax parcel down here on the south. So we're either going to try, the owner has to make the decision of adjusting this parcel line somehow so we don't have any non-conformities or combining them into one. I believe we're going to probably end up combining them into one, but we just haven't been able to submit that application yet. So that is the one outstanding item that we have not addressed on the comments. Otherwise, we went through all the comments and addressed them. I did list, I have a list you guys should have gotten as far as everything that we changed on the map from the last time. But otherwise, if there's anything you guys have comments or questions on, I can go through the list if you would like, but I didn't want to waste too much time for you.
We'll open up to questions.
Just a question on the front facade.
Yep.
That tan portion, is that just going to be a wood-looking metal? Is it going to be wood?
I'll verify what that's going to be made.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's a huge improvement. I like the way it looks on the rendering.
All set?
I'm all set, thank you.
Chuck?
Definitely a huge improvement of what's been there for years.
I agree.
I understand they're not planning on any customers?
No, no customers really come to this site, no. It's all by phone call or over the internet where they make their orders or their requests for rental, specifically the portables and all that. So that may bring them to the site.
Everything is delivered and picked up?
Yep.
But stored here?
Correct, stored here and hopefully in more organized manner than we've laid out on the site plan.
And just curious, other than that garage door in front, is that a grade door next to it? Entrance?
A man door.
Yeah, that's a man door.
Okay, is that the only door into the buildings?
There's some man doors on the side, on the side over here, I believe. And I think there's another man door on the other side over here. But I'll verify, I can get a layout of floor plan if that would help.
And I know I read, but I forget, how many employees were they considering?
I think they only have, hold on just a second, I don't want to speak out of turn.
Four or eight or something?
I think it's eight. Eleven employee spaces, buy space for yardsmith, so they have roughly 11 employees.
I assume on one or more of the other three sides that we can't see, also have garage doors for equipment to...
Yes, and they have the outbuildings in the back where they store a lot of stuff, too.
Will they be doing their own machinery repair and maintenance? Yes, we're going to get involved in that.
Correct.
Nice looking plan.
Thank you.
Mary?
I really like the rendering also, it looks very sharp. Do we know what the materials are? I know Zach asked about this wood. I don't know if we...
I'll get a list of the materials and maybe some samples to bring in.
Okay, and I don't see any lighting on the rendering at all?
I'm not on the rendering, there's the light plan on, I think, sheet three. So there's some existing wall packs, that was part of Mark's comments. So there's some existing wall packs that we're going to replace with new wall packs that are the dark sky compliant.
I guess, I'm sorry, if we're talking about the lighting, I guess, and the renderings to some extent, but the plan shows two lights, your site plan shows two lights on the, I guess, probably existing on the front of the building?
Is those?
Yeah, well, I don't know.
I know we had the two on this side.
I guess that, right there, and then there's another one, not there, we're to go, right here.
Okay.
So just, I guess, clarify what's going to happen with those.
Okay. Will do.
I think if you look at the street view, you know, if you go out there, they're there.
Okay.
Pretty sure.
That must be just my mistake, I missed it.
And then on the renderings, in addition to the materials, I mean, we don't have any renderings or elevations on any of the other sides of the building.
That was my next question.
Okay.
Yeah, so I guess it's up to the board whether you want to see those, should they be provided?
So it's optional, don't we always get them?
You should, in my opinion.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to see the other side as well.
Okay.
And then the out front is paved, right? So there won't be anybody parking out there though, right?
No, all the parking is, there it is, is up here in this area, and we have another parking area up here. But this is just like a drive-through lane through here for ingress and egress through here.
And then what's the material where, you know, this is pavement, and then when you go in over here, what is that, just gravel?
That is, this is, this is, right in here is where the asphalt ends.
Yeah.
And the gravel begins, so you got gravel in this area and asphalt through here.
Okay.
So, yeah, again, so relative to that, we're suggesting, recommending slash requiring that other entrance be paved because it is gravel.
An apron, right.
Typically, we go about 50 feet in.
Yep.
And is there going to be any other signs besides the two on the building?
No.
So no near the road or anything?
No.
Okay.
There's an existing sign out there, but they're removing the frame to that.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Donald?
These renderings, they look really good. If everything comes through the way it's presented here and everything, definitely a giant plus in the neighborhood up there. I like that.
We'll get you the other side of the building as well.
Yeah, yeah, I'm all set.
I agree that the front elevation looks much nicer. I just, I'm not sure if I would want it or not, but the right side of the building, some artificial windows or something along there, any thoughts on that?
In this area?
Yeah, and something on the...
Yeah, we can look at that, I'll put that in.
What do you think, Russio? For marketing?
It might look more friendly.
Oh, you're done. Just an opinion. I'm not either.
What's in there, right there, that's where you want them?
I know I did see...
That's what he's saying.
For appearance, not, I don't care if it's real, they have fake ones, right?
Yeah, they have fake ones, and I do believe we, there was an option at one point where we showed windows there, for whatever reason, they went away, but I'll double check and we'll look at getting some windows in there.
Because if you look at just that, it looks like the side of the building.
It does.
Yeah, instead of the front, yeah.
Okay.
And then the apron was the only other thing I had. Steve?
All set, thanks.
Yep.
Yeah, I think you're going to be looking at actually combining these lots.
Mark?
No, I think you've touched on the items that we had outstanding in our review letter.
I think you're good?
We're in a good spot to finalize this and get it wrapped up.
Sounds like a plan.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. You're not going too far.
Not going too far.
Next item is Serenity Living. This is for proposed mixed use at 9602 Bruton Road. This was approved once some time back.
So this is, I think it was... This wasn't approved site plan back in 2018. This is the property located right in the middle of Bruton. There used to be the...
The denoms?
They were on TV, was there. And it has a couple of old residential structures, so apartments for a while on the north side. Nothing as far as overall layout have changed?
So overall layout, parking layout, dumpster, everything is exactly the same as it was with the approved site plan. The specific reason why we're back here is the building facades and the general, I don't want to say the overall footprint of the building has changed a little bit, but they got a little bigger because we took out the balconies that were on the outside of the original building. So we got rid of the building, built the apartment canopies so that the people could have a little more room inside. So they used that as actual floor space for the actual apartments going in. So the footprint of the building actually got bigger, the facade changed as far as, because we got rid of those balconies, so you got a new architectural elevation with the plans that we did. We did get an architectural review just last week. We addressed a lot of those comments, so we got it from Mr. Rojas here, I think it was on the second. We addressed a lot of the site plan comments. I want to say that we haven't had a chance to address all the building comments that's on that letter. So we're not, we have, you'll get new plans that address those comments directly. I can go down through the site comments specifically. We added, we changed some of the landscaping as far as the trees that they referenced. There was an error on our last plan, so if you remember, there's this existing driveway here to an overhead door on this. This is the existing Saron's building that they actually fixed up already. There's this existing driveway here. Our original plan had us grassing and seeding this little area here, which was a mistake on our part because that driveway's staying, and they're going to utilize this driveway still. But that was the only mistake and change as far as the layout, as far as drivability. Dumpsters, enclosures, we added, we made sure that we showed that these have gates on there. We replaced the trees here with a different type of evergreen tree, so it's a little fuller, we added some evergreen trees up front for the comments. That was the main things that we changed. We didn't touch the foot candles. There was a comment about adding lighting. If the board thinks that we should add some lighting, we can add another light or light standard or something next to the dumpsters because there was a comment on his comments. But otherwise, we left the lighting alone. And the other thing that he brought up was the retaining or the wall out front. We still think it looks better with the small picket fence that we had out here. So in his comments, he talked about putting a masonry wall or low masonry wall similarly to what we did at Sears across the street. But we did not talk to the cap that he would rather do the fence out front instead of doing the wall. But those are the major changes from the site plan itself. Again, none of the engineering changed, and none of the real, like, impervious surface areas or drivability of the site changed.
The architect review, with Anthony, he talked about the elevation of the property. I don't know if that's in his letter or not, I don't see it, the elevation. But the front of the building to the back of the building drops four feet?
Yeah, you've got a grade change across the buildings.
Oh, yeah.
And if you look at the architectural elevations...
Oh, he doesn't change it?
It doesn't.
I see.
You know, it's either likely to, going to need steps or something in back or stairs to get up there.
Okay.
Revised those.
I don't know, I guess, on the sides, you don't have any access to them, but, you know, the foundation's likely to be exposed or...
Right.
You got to redo the grading plan to...
Yep, that makes sense. We can have the architectural revised so that they match what the proposed grading shows. Makes sense.
Zach, any questions?
More of a comment, the, on the front and the side elevations, the optional shake siding for the peaks, I think that looks pretty sharp. If you could make that not optional, keep it, that'd be great.
We are going to do that, we, I met with the owner two days ago, and that was one of the comments, we're going to take these optional portions out.
Perfect, thank you, all set.
Between the two buildings, there's a driveway going between the two buildings, is that correct?
Yep.
And then there's a walk crossing that drive?
Walk crossing that drive. Yes, the walk out front along Route 11.
No, if we could do the other elevation, I can point that out, or at least it looked like stairs. Hmm, I think that's what I was talking about.
Yeah, that's a walk, yeah.
Okay, I was just concerned about the drive with the walk going right across it, what's the best way to handle that for safety?
There's not a drive, this is not a driveway.
Oh, it is, okay, I thought it was a driveway.
This is drive here, this is grass.
All right. Okay. Thank you. And any problem with wetlands out there?
Nope.
This is within the Bruton Special District qualifications?
Yep. Hence the new comments from the architecture and review there.
I'm just thinking of this Saron TV building, used to be the Denman Pontiac.
Oh, okay.
And, off my head, you know, because they worked on cars and oil and everything for 50 years or whatever. And I assume for Saron, there had been studies for contamination?
That, I don't think any of that, and I can triple check, but I don't think any of the contaminations came up on the EAF when we did the report originally. I know that there's some issues on the parcel to the north, but I don't think there was anything for our parcel.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mary?
No, is there a basement for this?
No, it'd be slab-on grade.
Slab-on, okay, is there storage for the tenants anywhere?
I will double check, I didn't study the architecturals that well. I'll take a look at them and just get that answered. I don't want to sit here and look at the architecture.
Yeah, no, all right. Just wondering because that would affect my decision of living there. Also, where the parking is from the road, are those grass areas? Is there going to be landscaping kind of shielding the parking area?
So that was one of the comments with the architect, so we're proposing a, it looks small, but we have new evergreen trees here, 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 and here, and they actually get quite big as far as being able to block those areas.
Okay, but, and then you mentioned the white picket fencing versus the stone walls. Do you have, can we see what the stone wall looks like?
Well, we didn't propose any type of stone wall.
I know, but you said there was something across the street. Mark, can you get that up at all or?
Yeah, I don't know if Google Earth showed that one yet.
Do we have to make that decision on the stone wall versus the picket fence?
Well, the picket fence, we believe is allowable, right? And within overlay?
I believe it really does, I can double check that, but I believe it does allow.
So the handling has its own overlay for standards, and the picket fence is allowable.
I think it was allowed, and if I remember correctly, our original site plan, we didn't originally show the picket fence, and it was part of the Hamlet restrictions, and that came up as one of the comments, that, so we had to add the picket fence. This is the hardware store that has it?
Yeah.
That's the wall that we, that is across the street from, kind of across the street from the site.
Yeah, that's not impressive.
Looks better now.
It's all the sidewalks are fixed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The question came up on any, is there any contamination? I can, I could answer that firsthand.
Oh.
Because I owned the property at one point.
Okay.
And on the north side, the north side of Saron's, and on the east side, I owned right around them. But I had to have my property checked in the whole nine yards. And that's when I found out, like, two lots north of that, they had issues. At some point in history, there must have been a gas station or something.
The owner actually does own the parcel to the north of us, and he's fully aware of that contamination issue, and they're actually pretty much done with that.
That, the northerly edge of this proposal right here is, that was what I owned, and everything was good. I think that's definitely gonna, these two apartment buildings are going to be a plus to that neighborhood. It's like bringing everything farther south on Route 11 as far as the building's looking better and everything, so it'll be a plus to the neighborhood. Other than that, I think it looks pretty good.
Thank you.
Tim, the only question I have is, I was getting a conflict in the number of units. The plan shows 20, I count, 18?
Okay, I'll double check that.
And everything else has been covered. Steve?
I recall originally, when this first came around, comments or discussion, requests from the fire department for height on this side of the road because the nearest one was across the road of concerns of crossing Bruton Road there. Did you, I think maybe, did some work to that, and may have occurred already, but Mr. Brooks may know, or we could reach out to the fire department and have that discussion.
Will do.
Yep.
All set.
Mark?
All set.
That's okay, now you may leave. Thanks, yes.
I appreciate it, we can get everything revised and get it back to you as soon as possible.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Last agenda item is for CarMax Auto Superstore at 7687 7785 Frontage Road. This was actually approved, but I think we ran out of time.
They did, that's the fair canal with CNS engineers. The only changes to the plan are the date, we did re-date it so that it would be updated. Then the easement language used to read concurrently with the map, as if they were going to be filed at the same time, we changed that to be the map filed subsequently. So that it would be filed first, then once they're filed, then we have the receipt, then, you know, everybody, then the planning board, the chair can sign the flat and file the flat afterwards. So we tweaked that one a little bit. So before, it was written as if they were all going to be filed together. Now, it's sort of the three that are going for, and will come after once you sign it. That is the only change, nothing else has changed.
So again, this was all approved once, it's just a matter of timing right now, so they have to go through the process again, unfortunately.
And right now, so you know, they have the owner of the piece that we're buying, the LLC that owns it now, has sent overnighted back to Steve Drake at Aqua. Aqua files their own easements, they won't let us do it, they won't let CarMax's attorneys do it. So with that and the TP 584 on their way back, they should have received them today. And the attorney for CarMax should have received back their three easements from the owner today as well. He's going to send them to their title company, and the title company is going to handle it, hopefully tomorrow. Hopefully tomorrow, our three will be filed, and then as soon as Aqua takes theirs down and files, so that one will be in place as well.
So Neil, procedurally, this process as far as approval, can that happen tonight? Or, all right.
They've shown me the easements, I reviewed them, you know, they're acceptable. You have had a public hearing on this. I don't see a reason why you couldn't just approve it tonight. There would be still good conditions, they're going to have to file the easements, and they're going to start the 90-day clock ticking, but other than that, I don't see what...
Okay. Open up to questions, Zach?
I'm all set.
Chuck?
I'm pretty well set, I've never seen quite so many easements in one area. Question on the old bank building, is that coming down or making this of it?
Yep, yeah, they actually, they're kind of hoping the sign would be down already. That's one of the conditions of this, the seller is supposed to take his multipurpose sign that's up on the corner down, he hasn't done it yet. If he doesn't do it, they'll do it when they get there. And I think he actually is hoping with, my mother's fire department this year at one of the meetings, while potentially letting them do some type of, you know, training or something on the building.
Okay. So you're going to get scrapped, the safe and everything too, then, probably?
Hey, thank you. Mary?
I'm just going to ask, that proposed lot number two, is that the existing building that...
Can't see it up there to be honest with you.
Where, um...
Dead anymore.
Holly's?
I can't read it. Proposed lot number two.
That's, that's existing.
Yeah, the existing plaza building that's there with all of the storefronts and everything in it.
Is that going to stay?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, that's, we don't have anything to do with that, that's just the new lot. We're splitting it, we're taking the lot to the bank on it, and then that's the lot that's left to the plaza owner. So, yeah, the BET Cicero LLC will maintain ownership of that lot.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Thank you, I don't have any more.
Donald?
I'm all set.
As am I.
All set, thank you.
You're good, Mark. Do we need a new seeker? I'll make a motion for our standard seeker, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
Mr. Abbey?
Yes.
Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Bloss?
Yes.
And I vote yes, seeker passes. Neil, would you propose a motion for approval, please?
[inaudible] [inaudible] CEO, Centerpoint, Integrating Solutions, 7687 and 7785 Frontage Road. Two lots as follows, with a mission now following. One, the APN has provided draft easements, easements shown on the map for approval. They've been found acceptable, the APN will file the easements with the annual accounting clerk's office and provide the planning board with proof or set filing. This should be done before signing on the map. The APN is hereby advised pursuant to Section 185.6, under the Epicure Code, that the APN, that's nine days from the approval, will be filed on that. The APN misses the 90-day filing deadline, as approval has expired. Finally, the APN was further notified, the chairman of the planning board in the late night, and finally, the branch of the committee, the chairman, has verified that the APN has executed any and all necessary agreements with the town and securities or undertakings they've signed.
And would somebody like to make that a motion?
That's in the form of a motion.
Second. Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
Mr. Abbey?
Yes.
Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Bloss?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Congratulations again. That concludes our agenda items. That concludes our agenda items, and I'm gonna start discussion. My deputy chair, whose term expires this year, has asked to not be reappointed, and he makes me not happy. Dan's been a intricate part of this team for some, how long?
Five years.
Five years? It, it, and beyond this, he's done an awful lot for the, for the community and for the town of Cicero. So, he's gonna enjoy life a little bit more, and I'm happy for him about that, but we'll miss him here. Dan, any thoughts?
I had a big speech already, but, uh, I decided not to do it. I just wanna say, uh, thank you to all the people involved, uh, I've enjoyed, it's been a learning experience as well, and, um, I'm, I'm glad I had the opportunity to work with all you people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Anybody else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All second. Meeting is adjourned. Good night, Merry Christmas, everybody, have a great New Year, and we'll see you next year.
Yes.